Sorry for our delay. Welcome, everyone, for our second March council meeting. It's nice, I'm hoping that we won't be the longest meeting that's in this chamber this week. So, but we are going to get going today. So, Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement, please?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
President.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmerson.
Here.
Mr. Pulaski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toad.
Here.
Council President McTernan.
President. All right. At this time, I'd like to call on Rabbi Friedman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast channels 36 and 34, and Verizon channels 30 and 33, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast channel 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion now to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session for March 4th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Hi. Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, we're at our report section of our meeting. As always, Madam Mayor, please deliver your report for us, please.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. A few updates for the community tonight. First, our first virtual town hall of the year will be on March 25th from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, focusing on public safety with Captain Ryan Peters. I will be moderating, asking questions submitted ahead of time to our communications department, as well as those coming in live during the session. We'll try to get in as many as we can, but we encourage residents to submit questions early. You can watch the event on the City of Summit Facebook page, or just search City of Summit Facebook on Google if you don't have a Facebook account. Mike. Next, the city's college internship program is back for the 16th year. Applications are open for Summit residents through April 11th. We encourage college students majoring in political science, public administration, HR, finance, or communications to apply. Interns will work 24 hours a week in June, earning $15 an hour. A final reminder that the Summit Police Department is still accepting applications until April 1st for the Youth Police Academy. Kids ages 10 to 14, as of July 21st, can apply, with sessions running from July 21st to 25th and July 28th to August 1st. And they do want, they can do both, but they do one or the other. You can do one or the other, you don't have to do both weeks. Right? And that's a really, really fun way to have kids get to know our police officers, and they learn a lot about law enforcement and the noble profession. So, very cool, very cool couple of weeks. Also, mark your calendars for April 10th. It's a celebration of Local Government Week, and the city will host a Summit showcase at the new fire station from 3:00 to 5:00 PM on April 10th. It's a family-friendly event with fun activities, including a chance to check out the fire trucks and police vehicles, grab some swag, and learn more about city resources and volunteer opportunities. We hope to see you there. And last, tomorrow is Councilman Smallwood's birthday, so if you see him around town, please wish him a happy one.
No, it's not.
So, my calendar is tomorrow.
No.
Don't wish Kevin Smallwood a happy birthday tomorrow.
It's a case if you want to, it's October 15th.
Why is it in my calendar wrong? That happened to me, too. Remember that happened to me? We were with you. Nuts. All right, forget I said anything.
I mean, we can celebrate my, like, is it my half-birthday yet?
Sorry about that. That is all I have.
All righty, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, we're on to our city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. We have a few wonderful community events coming up in the next month that I'll share with you tonight. The Second Annual Women's History Month event at the Community Center is taking place this weekend on Sunday, March 23rd. The event will feature a luncheon, a movie showing, and the opportunity to hear from a couple of Summit's most impactful women, including our Mayor Elizabeth Fagan and Sergeant Kathy Majuli of the Summit Police Department. Attendees are encouraged to bring a photo of a woman who has inspired them to share with the group and place their photo on the wall of inspiration. The annual PAL Easter egg hunt will be held on Saturday, April 12th, on the Village Green. The fun will begin at 1:00 PM with music, arts, crafts, and a magic show, and the egg hunt will begin at 1:45. There will be three races separated by age, and after the egg hunt, attendees can take photos with the Easter bunny and collect prizes. Two quick reminders, the Earth Day cleanup is taking place on Saturday, March 29th, at Bryant Park and at Martins Brook Park, and applications for the Hometown Heroes program are due at the end of the month, March 31st, and you can find additional information on all of these events on the city website at cityofsummit.org. And that's it for my report.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the Easter egg hunt, I think, is the most exciting 30 seconds in sports. It's pretty amazing.
You've never been to a swimming meet.
Yeah. All right, my council president report be quick. I mentioned this last meeting. We are in the thick of budget season. We are working on our budget here for the city. We should have more information for our budget next month, so stay tuned for that. I know Ms. Baldwin, in her two hats that she wears, she's been working really, really hard as our CFO in getting our budget to look good, and we're confident we're going to have a really good one to show. That's about 20% of your tax bill. The other 50-odd percent of your tax bill is the school budget, so keep this on your calendar. I think there's a Board of Ed meeting that they'll talk about their budget on the 20th. It's at the Middle School Auditorium, and then there is the Board of School Estimate meeting, which will take place at the Wilson Primary School Center at 11:00 AM. Not sure why it's in the morning, but I don't make those decisions, on Thursday, March 27th. That's 50% of your tax bill. The proposed budget is a bit outside the cap. It was at almost 9%, I believe. We'll see what they come back with at the next meeting. But again, this is the opportunity for the citizens to make their voices heard, whether you're for or against it, what have you. You should be engaged, because it's going to affect your tax bill, one way or the other. And that is my report. Okay. We're going to go to our historical minute at this time. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. In our continuing to celebrate Women's History Month, we have two juniors from Summit High School here to discuss women's history in Summit Athletics. So, one's named Alana Friedman, she's a softball player, and Audrey Carrigan, who participates in cross-country and winter and spring track.
My name is Alana Friedman, and I'm a junior at Summit High School, and I play on the softball team.
Good evening. My name is Audrey. I'm a junior, and, like you said, I participate in cross-country and winter and spring track.
The Summit History Minute, in honor of Women's History Month and the accomplishments of women athletes in Summit, comes from a 2004 article from the Summit Historical Society, written by Art Carterell, who for many years led the Summit Historical Society and was a beloved and respected history teacher, coach, and supervisor in the Summit Public Schools.
Many people think that girls' high school varsity teams are relatively recent innovation, which came about as a result of the passage of Title IX in the last 50 years. Title IX mandates equal opportunities for men and women in interscholastic sports. However, a 2004 search of the files at the Carter House revealed that Summit High School had girls' championship teams many years before Title IX legislation was enacted.
In the 1918-1919 school year, the girls' basketball team at Summit High won the championship of the Morris and Essex League. Further reading and later additions of the paper indicated that the team had finished with a record of eight wins and only one loss. Another interesting statistic was that the team had not lost a game on its own court in over three years.
A picture of the team appeared later in the Newark Sunday Call identifying the seven girls who played on the team. Marielle Haviland, Marguerite Seeler, Billy Finnegan, Ruth Hall, Clara McNabb, Marguerite Brenn, and Florence Anderson. Standing in the back row at the right is Ms. Grace Jones, who looks to be one of the players.
Ms. Jones, at the age of 22, had come to teach in Summit in 1916 and was the only physical education teacher in the whole school system, which had 1,616 students. She became the supervisor of physical education in 1927, when a second phys ed teacher was hired. Ms. Jones held that position until her retirement in 1957, thus completing a 41-year teaching career. She was responsible for designing and leading what had become the entire physical education program for the city schools, and at the time of her retirement, was the only woman to head a physical education department in New Jersey.
Carterell continues to write that Howie Anderson, longtime football coach and athletic director at Summit High School, had told him that when he was hired in 1956, it was customary to take the new teachers on a bus ride around Summit to introduce them to the community. Ms. Jones told Howie that when she was hired, they were doing the same thing, the only difference being that she was taken around by horse and buggy.
Grace Jones was widely known throughout the country for her work in physical education. Upon her death in 1977 at the age of 83, the Summit Herald had this to say about her well-known reputation. Besides her pioneering efforts in the field of physical education, Ms. Jones was a nationally known authority on women's basketball rules. For six years, from 1924 to 1930, she was the editor of the Official Basketball Guide for Women and Girls. During that time, the first official guide was translated into Spanish for use in South America. In 1939, Ms. Jones was elected a Fellow of the American Association for Health, Physical Education, and Recreation.
Thank you for providing this opportunity for more people to learn about the history of women and sports in Summit. As Summit student athletes, we can assure you this tradition of commitment and excellence continues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was awesome. I learned a ton. Thank you so much for that. Okay. All right, so we're done with our, we have no presentations to speak of for this meeting, so we're going to go right into ordinances for hearings. So, Madam Clerk, will you please read the first finance ordinance for hearing, please?
Ordinance number 25-3334, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Toad.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that allows us to exceed our municipal budget appropriations limit and establish a cap bank. The municipal budget is subject to two different caps, or limits on increases. Most residents are familiar with the 2% limit on annual tax increases. There is a second, 2.5% limit on most, but not all, spending increases. Municipalities are permitted to pass an ordinance each year to increase the spending limit to 3.5%. This does not raise our ability to tax the residents, just our ability to spend. This increase is good for two years, and then it lapses. Summit routinely passes this ordinance. Its purpose is to permit us to handle an unexpected situation. For example, if our property and casualty insurance premiums jumped in the middle of the year. Without this ordinance, we'd have to go back and amend the entire budget. We don't expect to need to spend funds above the 2% spending cap this year, and in prior years, we have not done so. This is a form of self-insurance. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second. All right, I'm going to declare our hearing is open. Is there any member from the public who wishes to speak on this proposed ordinance?
Good evening. Diego Hoygna, Nargel Court. I have a few wonky questions to understand the numbers. Perhaps they're better directed at our city administrator. First one, the amount on which the cap is applied is $36,573,136. It matches the 2024 budget appropriations for municipal operations, line by line, but for a $140,000 difference. Can you please explain what causes this difference, which seems to arise mathematically from changes to deferred charges and reserves? The second question is that last year, council approved a similar cap increase, but the 2024 proposed budget appropriations represented a 4.9% increase, and we now know that the cap was not used during 2024. Can you please help me understand how the budgeted increase was 4.9% in light of this cap? Perhaps there's lines that are not subject to the cap. I also want to take advantage of this opportunity to ask three additional questions. What was the dollar amount actually expended for municipal operations in 2024, originally appropriated at 36,433,136? What were the total realized revenues and total expended appropriations for 2024? Both budgeted amounts were $57,166,41. And I understand that we're using different software this year that will make operations more efficient but change the reporting. Kudos for making work more efficient. But can you confirm that the city will continue to publish the one-page budget snapshot? In closing, I have no concerns about this ordinance passing. I simply wanted to understand, and I will give you my notes when I, with my, thank you.
Thank you. We'll address everything after we're done with questions or comments. Any other public comments or questions? All right, I'm going to close the public comment section of our hearing. Do I have any comments from council members? City Administrator, CFO Baldwin, would you like to tackle Mr. Hoygna's question?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I'll put my CFO hat on. The amount on the cap does match 2024 deferred charges, and debt service are outside of cap, so that accounts for that number being different by the $140,000. The second question, so, we don't necessarily use this cap. We, people get confused by it, thinking that it's actually money in the bank. It is not, right? It is, just allows us to go up with the items that are within cap. If you look at a municipal budget, there are items within cap and items outside of cap. There's less and less outside of cap as the years have gone on, and sometimes the state will do, the Division of Local Government Services for the state of New Jersey will enact a local finance notice and say, hey, we're going to let you have, last year, they let you have sanitation outside of cap if you wanted to. But again, as Councilwoman Toad said, it doesn't permit you to go above the 2% tax levy, it just gives you maneuvering room inside of that within-cap number in the budget. So, if you don't need it, it's banked, not as money, but as a number that you can go up to. So, we kind of do it as a matter of course. I've been a CFO for 24 years now, and I always do the ordinance. Oftentimes, you don't need it, but just in case you do, now we're in the future, it's good to have it on the books. So, that's what it's there for. Mr. Hoygna, the questions with regard to 2023 final expenditures?
24.
And you said 24 revenues. I thought you said 23 final. My, okay.
All 24.
All 24, okay. My apologies. Those numbers will come out when I finalize the budget. We are still spending, paying some bills from 2024, obviously, into usually at least the first quarter, sometimes a little bit late. All of our vendors don't bill us very timely, so we chase them sometimes. Revenues, I have a very good idea, I just haven't published them yet, and the annual financial statement will be coming out, which will show all the revenues, too. And then, the last question was, I have to read my own handwriting. Oh, the budget snapshot. It absolutely will be coming out. Our communications, Chief Communications Officer and myself will work on that as soon as we have the numbers finalized and we introduce the municipal budget. Then that'll go out to all the residents, as it always has.
Thank you, that was very thorough. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Yes, any other comments from council? No, I would just reiterate, it, you know, this is, we use these terms because this is what the state uses, as a cap bank. But again, there, it's a bank with no money. There is no money in here if we were to go and spend it. The money would come from everybody out here, okay? It's the taxability. And it is done, to be prudent, just in case, but it's not something that we do because we want to use it, it would be if there was an emergency or such. So, I am supportive of the ordinance. All right, if hearing no other comments, I'm going to close the hearing for this ordinance. Madam Clerk, we have another ordinance for hearing today. Please read the one on law and labor.
Ordinance number 25-3335, an ordinance at the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, establishing an electric and/or natural gas aggregation program.
Thank you so much. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. We introduced this ordinance at the last meeting. So, this ordinance authorizes the City Summit to participate in the governmental energy aggregation program. We had a prior presentation from Lisa Hibbs of Commercial Utility Consultants, Inc. She's here tonight, actually, thankfully, to answer any questions that people may have on this. Adoption will allow the city to enter into an agreement with Concord Energy Consulting and JCPL for local distribution and the cooperative pricing agreement officially adding Summit as a participating member. To be included in the upcoming GS CEC auction, council must adopt this ordinance tonight and file all necessary documents by April 1st. This ordinance in no way commits the City of Summit to the program, but it will allow consultants from Concord and CEC to search for a co-op that Summit could join and give us an estimated savings. I move to adopt this ordinance.
I second it. Open the hearing.
Yeah, we're going to, sorry.
I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll second that as well.
Okay, we're not, all right. All right, I'm going to declare our hearing on this law and labor ordinance open to public comments at this time. Okay, no public comments? All right, I'm going to close the public comment section of our hearing. Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Pulaski, you mentioned that Concord could find the third-party suppliers, but can you just correct, maybe she can answer, Bob, you might know it as well, but I believe that's through a bid process, if you could just correct that. And then, my second question is, we talked about it a little bit, the opt-in and opt-out. Can you just remind the residents again about the opt-in and the opt-out?
Absolutely. This is, my name is Lisa Hibbs. For the record, I am with Commercial Utility Consultants and also representing Concord Energy Services this evening. We represent and are appointed the energy consultants for several cooperatives in the state of New Jersey, one of which is the Garden State Community Energy Cooperative, which is, we think, a great fit for the City of Summit, just based on geography. So, this ordinance is a toe in the water. It allows you to establish the program, it does not mandate that you establish the program. So, again, it's just a savings program. In order for us to find out if we can get a lower bid than what JCPL is charging through their basic generation service rate, there is an auction process. That does happen if you join the cooperative at the cooperative's behest. We would counsel, of course, as to timing in the market, that might be beneficial. If we do not get a rate that is lower than JCPL's basic generation service rate, we cannot make an award. There must be a savings in order for us to move forward. It is an opt-out process. We have done this with 99 towns in the state of New Jersey. This is not a trailblazing moment. By any stretch, there is a lot of feedback that you can call our current clients and find out how the process works. It's not meant to be disruptive. Unfortunately, right now, there is no program for residents in the City of Summit to opt out of. This would only be if and when we go out to auction, an award is made, and a contract is in place with a third-party supplier. At that point, it triggers the opt-out process. We make it as easy as we can. There's an 800 number that folks can call, there's an online portal that they can utilize, they can call JCPL directly, they can call our customer care team directly. There's also an opt-out card in the information packets that will be mailed. According to regulations, we must mail USPS information packets to every eligible resident, giving them the opportunity to evaluate the option to participate, realizing they can absolutely opt out. There is also a permanent opt-out feature, meaning that if the City of Summit were to do this initial program, and it's two years down the road, we go back out to auction, there's a new program term. So, there's a new program for folks to opt out of. Anyone that permanently opted out in round one would not be automatically included, would not have to opt out again. Did I cover it?
So, do you have other questions? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Just the only one. I think this is a complicated subject for some of the public to understand, so I would ask Council President that we just mention that we had a presentation, maybe in a form or in another press release, because we did give, you gave a very thorough presentation, and we might be able to just kick that back up on our Instagram or something.
I just want to reiterate what Councilman Pulaski said. This ordinance in no way, shape, or form is committing us to the program. I just want to be very clear, this is to, for us to understand whether or not there would be potential savings for our residents on their electricity bills. Everybody knows that costs have gone up a lot. This is an opportunity where we can aggregate our demand from our town and possibly be able to save our residents, I don't know, 50 bucks, 100 bucks a year, whatever it is. I'd take 100 bucks a year if I could save it. It's the same thing, your lights go on, just like they normally do, but I do understand it. This will take a lot of education for the residents to understand what they're doing, why we're doing this. So, I just want to make sure when we, when we're voting up here, that we are committing to nothing, and that before we would actually agree to do this, we would have some public meeting for residents to come and ask questions, to understand what the program is, just so everyone can be as comfortable as possible. So, the vote tonight, you're not, your energy supplier is not changing tomorrow, okay? So, just trust me, we will have plenty of time to talk about this before we finally adopt this, okay?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you for mentioning that, because the last time that we spoke, and your presentation was great, and you did go into detail, and there was a lot of questions that was asked, like, one of which is, there was a situation that happened in Texas, right? There was a storm. And having this type of energy can disrupt that, and there can be some variables in terms of how much you pay. Because your third party cannot provide the energy sources, you have to go to a different, you know, utility supplier. So, I would encourage all residents to go back and look at that. I wish I knew when we actually talked about that.
October.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Smallwood. I appreciate it.
October 22nd.
October 22nd, great. So, check that out, because, you know, I, I would like the dialogue, because I had some concerns that, you know, I'd like to walk through with the residents as well. So, but thank you explaining that our vote here tonight does not enter us into any type of deal, the city into any deal, any residents into any deal. You're not going to wake up tomorrow with a new utility bill, so, okay.
And if I could, one more piece of information. Even if you join a cooperative, and the cooperative says, hey, we're going to go out to auction on May 24th, you do not have to be a part of that auction. You can say, hey, you know what, gee golly, we've got a lot going on in town right now, now is not a good time. Leave us out of this auction.
Okay.
As long as we have. As long as we have that information before we submit the bid documents to the Board of Public Utilities, Division of Rate Council, Department of Community Affairs for review, we can pull you out of that. Again, you're not obligated. Once we go out to auction, you're committed, but we would have done a lot of outreach and a lot of communication prior to that. I mean, you're months and months away from that.
Right. Yes, Councilman Pulowski.
How do we know, well, two questions. First, what's, I mean, what are the typical savings that?
Prior to 2021, we were around 7% to 10%, depending on the co-op. Different load factors, different load profiles for different co-ops, just they receive different bids, so the best way to describe that. Currently, we have two cooperatives that are under contract. We have the 100 and Area Energy Cooperative, 14 towns there. We have the Sussex Warren Area Energy Cooperative, 13 towns there. The savings is about 5.5%. Certainly not the 7% to 8% to 10% that we were receiving, we were receiving prior to 2021, but the savings is at least back. Those programs were dormant from 2021 to just recently, October 2024, just because we couldn't beat JCPL's basic generation service price. So, I do have figures for you, though. So since October of 2024, those 14 towns in the 100 and Area Energy Cooperative have saved $211,000 for their residents. That cooperative prior to, in previous rounds. So from February 2019 to December 2021, their savings was $1.7 million. And for the Sussex Warren Co-op, currently under contract since October through January 1, savings have been $109,000. Smaller towns, smaller aggregate, but prior to that, from March 2017 through December 2021, their savings was over $2 million.
And so, the second question was, we, you know, we don't commit ourselves to being a part of this until we hear what the savings will be, so that if it comes back and it's not that big a savings, or the feedback that we get at another meeting that we hold is, yeah, it looks like it's going to be a little bit of savings, but I'm not comfortable switching, we can always just decide we're not doing this.
So if you are part of a cooperative, there is a lead agent that makes that decision for the cooperative. So the, the-
I'm talking about for the very first time.
If, if you're in, so if you go it alone, yes, you have ultimate right of refusal. Now, if you go it the first time in a cooperative, same rules apply. The lead agency will make that decision for the entire cooperative. Now, the good news is, the lead agency for the Garden State Co-op is the Borough of Lincoln Park. They have been a participant in government energy aggregation since 2015. They're seasoned, they know what they're doing. They will not take less than 5%. We would never recommend less than 5% savings. We are hoping that, I hate to say this, but there is a huge increase coming through in JCPL's basic generation service, and it's not just JCPL, it's all over the state. It's all over PJM territory. So we are hopeful that we can help eliminate some of that increase. We're looking at 17% to 20% increases coming through, just on the supply side. It's not on the entire bill, but on the supply side. So we would hope that, that sort of levels our playing field in the market, and we can be competitive and get you more like the 7%, 10% savings, to at least absorb, you know, 10% of that 20%, 17% increase.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. Lisa, it almost feels like a year since we actually had this conversation.
Time flies.
Right? So, I would like to give actually credit to Donna Patel with the Environmental Commission to making the introduction. You know, we met, and I think we actually finally had our first conversation in April or May of last year. And, you know, you had said in, in that conversation that in July, JCPL were going to raise their fees. And I, I remember in August, in September, there were residents that came on, that came here to a meeting and complained like, my bill went up. And there were several conversations online through social media, but, you know, asking other residents if their electricity bill had gone up. And, you know, now, and I would encourage for all the residents with any questions to go back to the council meeting of October 22nd to, to review your presentation. And now you're saying that this year, they're estimated at 17% to 20% increase.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, and Ms. Smallwood, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the city, for its own municipal buildings, are currently in a co-op. Is that correct? So, this, the municipality itself is already in a co-op, and this co-op would be specifically for residents. And I, I think, you know, it would, you know, benefit us to at least go out and look to find out if there's a possibility for us to be able to save at least 5% or more for our residents. And I believe there's also an option for those that, you know, there's an opt-out, well, if you don't want to participate, and again, this is just for your supply, you're still going to get your JCPL bill. It's all going to come from JCPL. No one's going to come in and switch lines to your house. This is just the supply of electricity. JCPL will still deliver it to your home. But there's an opt-out option, so if for whatever reason you don't want to save 5% or more, but there's also, I believe, an opt-up option as well.
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Sure. So for those residents that are interested in additional renewable energy in their supply, we do offer in all of our programs now the option for residents to opt up into a 100% renewably sourced energy supply. It is, it's mostly national wind coming from the Midwest. It is not anything homegrown here in New Jersey. We certainly could if you want to get nitty-gritty with it, but the more nitty-gritty we get, the more expensive it gets. But the, the cost difference for the 100 and Area Energy Co-op, their basics, so the basic minimum required renewable, their rate is 11.19 cents right now. JCPL's rate is 11.88. And on the renewable, the price is 11.76 cents versus that 11.88. Now, that 11.88 on the JCPL side, they do change their rate every quarter. When we started the program in October, the rate was 11.66. In December, it switched to 11.33. In March, it switched to 11.88. So it does bounce around, which is why we say don't take anything less than 5%, because you can absorb those changes. But yes, there is an option for residents to opt up into that 100% renewable, and we'll help you with any sustainable jersey goals that you might have. There's not sustainable jersey credits for that, but it will certainly help you with any climate change goals that you might have in, in the city.
And for those that have, currently have solar, this would not affect them?
No, we would opt them out. It will disrupt their credits, on their, their net meter credits, so we would sweep them out.
And if they're already in, in contract with a third-party supplier?
JCPL will not identify them as an eligible, an account holder. So they, they would not be included in that. They could certainly join if they wanted to. We would just recommend that they check with their current third-party supplier to make sure there's no early termination, fees, or penalties, but the, the recommendation is usually, hey, wait for that contract to end, and then come on over.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments from council?
Yeah, I'll just close that. I know when I was on council first time around, this came up, I want to say around 2014 or so, or 15, and we talked about it then, and I remember thinking, this is actually a really cool program that the state has put together that would allow residents some buying power, some purchasing power. And we started going down that road, and I think the market changed or somewhat, so there were these savings involved in, you know, futures market and contangos and backwardations, et cetera, but it went away, and so we dropped it, because it wasn't worth spending city staff time on it. But I'm pleased to see that Councilman Smallwood, I'm glad he got the nod from, from Donna to start to look at this again, because like I said, it's, it's a pretty neat way that we as individuals can work together as a community and save each other some money. And in this day and age, I think that's a pretty important goal that we can begin with this process to pursue.
All right, there's no other comments. I'm going to close the, the hearing on this ordinance, and then we're going to move on now to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, will you please read our first ordinance from finance?
Ordinance number 25-3334, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. And having recently closed the hearing on this ordinance, I move the ordinance for final adoption.
I second. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right. Motion passes. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for final consideration from law and labor?
Ordinance number 25-3335, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, establishing an electric and/or natural gas aggregation program.
Thank you very much. Councilman Pulowski.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 25335. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Okay, thanks, everyone. We're now moving on to our resolution section of our meeting. We have quite a few tonight. We're going to start off with-
Pushing them.
Oh, we're pushing this one, yeah. So this, our, Resolution Number 1 on Safety and Health, we're pushing. So we're moving along to Safety and Health, Resolution Number 2. Councilman Boyer.
I'm sorry, so ID number 11831, we're, we're-
Nope, that's the one we're doing.
Oh, okay. Okay, I only have two on here, so maybe I have an outdated copy. All right. All right, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11831, confirming the mayor's appointment of a new police chief. It is with great pride and confidence that we introduce the mayor's appointment for the next police chief of the Summit Police Department, Ryan Peters. A dedicated public servant with nearly two decades of law enforcement experience, Chief Peters has built a distinguished career rooted in integrity, leadership, and a commitment to community safety. From patrolling the streets of Summit to leading specialized investigation units, Chief Peters has served in critical roles, including captain, detective sergeant, and SWAT team leader, each demanding excellence in decision-making, crisis management, and strategic vision. His tenure as commander of the Support Service Division reflects not only his operational expertise, but also his deep investment in community engagement, officer training, and public trust. Beyond the badge, Chief Peters has fostered meaningful relationships with residents, schools, and local organizations, always championing initiatives that enhance safety, education, and collaboration. His extensive training in crisis response, tactical operations, and law enforcement leadership ensures that Summit remains capable and compassionate hands. Tonight, we proudly affirm this appointment, knowing that Chief Ryan Peters embodies the core values of service, accountability, and excellence that defines the Summit Police Department, and we welcome him to his new role with great expectations for the future of our city's safety and security.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, not so fast. Do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. This, it, this really warmed my heart when they told me today in closed session that you, you will become our, our new chief of police. So, I've known you for several years back in our PAL days, and thank you very much for, for your service, and really looking forward to leading our awesome police department. And I know you'll do just as, as well as our current chief, Sigorski, and really looking forward to it. So thank you very much for all of your service, and thank you. Congratulations.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just want to say congratulations as well. We're very excited for you, very proud of you, excited for what the future holds. And Chief Sigorski, obviously, thank you for your service. Will be many more celebrations and looking forward to, you know, to, to sending you off in a proper way. So thank you for all, all your service.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
There will be a, like a ceremony, right?
Yeah.
I was going to say, there's no police officers here. Do you have any friends?
I'm going to, I'll just wrap up comments and say, I'm very excited to have our, our new police chief be Captain, or Captain Peters. We, we had a very, very long conversation a couple of weeks ago. It was long, but it was super, super informative. I learned so much, and it, you know, you just see the passion for this community and the passion for the, the, the job and the role. And not just that, the ideas about all the things that it's going to do just really lit up a room. So I'm super, super excited, couldn't be more excited. And I know, going to have big shoes to fill from Chief Sigorski. He's left our department in amazing shape, and our community very safe, and with, with a great relationship with our, our community as well. So I'm excited, but I am excited for our, our new chief.
All right, that, we just do a roll call, not a roll call.
No, you don't need to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Mayor, would you like to make a little introduction here?
I would, so hold on, Captain. I just want to say that I've known Captain Peters for several years.
Chief.
Chief, well, he hasn't been sworn in yet, so technically.
Effective, okay.
And as much as I have enjoyed working with and getting to know Chief Sigorski, I am proud for this, of this appointment as, as chief successor. I think I've known Ryan for over a decade. Chief, sorry, Captain. I'm not sure what to call you these days. Some things I won't call you. I just want to say, his resume is very impressive, and, and when he submitted it, I teased him a little and said, could he please cut it down? It was too long, because he really is an accomplished young man, and we're very, very fortunate. Captain Chief Ryan has adopted Summit as his town, and that's really evident in the way that he behaves himself, and it's also really nice to see how well-respected he is within the department by all of his peers and all of those who look up and, and report to him. So we are in great hands. Thank you to Chief Sigorski, obviously, for, for setting us up, but I want to, I'm really, really proud to be able to appoint you to chief.
Through you, Council President. I stand before you tonight deeply honored and humbled to accept the role of chief of police. This is not a responsibility I take lightly, and I am grateful for the trust placed in me to lead this department and serve our great community. First, I want to extend my sincere th-
So, you know, I give Claire a lot of credit for asking about the details, as painful as it is, we're, I'm just like her. So, we're going to get her that information. I will say that for this specific one, this is a really important one, because as we move from the third round in affordable housing to the fourth round, right now, we're working on our fair share housing and element plan in the planning board. We are pedal of the metal right now through June, and it's going to be an exhaustive process, but these are literally our sixth man or woman on our basketball team. All of these consultants are, we can plug them in, they're in the game, they know what we're doing, they advocate for the city, and I'm just really confident and excited to have all of these consultants as a part of our team. So, I'd like to move this resolution.
So, move.
Comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
Council President.
Yes, please, Councilman Boyer.
I can't help but think that if you are an attorney and you're not involved in the housing game, you are dropping the ball, because this is a racket. I mean, the original contract at $40,000 tripled, tripled from 40 to $108,000 over affordable housing, whether you like it or not, you know, whatever. Lawyers are making a ton of money. I mean, we could have built at least one little tiny house with $108,000. I mean, this is such a racket. I, when these bills come in and I look at these attorney fees, I'm like, what is going on here? I, I'm sorry. That's more of a comment than anything.
To exceed $70,000. That was also amended not to exceed $96,000. And now the director advises that the contract needs to be increased to permit the department to process any final billing for 2024 and now is recommending a not to exceed for $108,000. The funds should not exceed an additional $12,000. I will say before I wrap up that we went through an exhaustive process in 2024 reconciling every single invoice. In fact, I was really excited to throw them all away until Claire wanted to see all of the bills today, so I'm going to drop them off all to her house tomorrow. But I think that, you know, one of Councilwoman Toth's questions was, I really want to see all of the bills. And it's hard as a new councilperson to vote for things like this when you don't have all of the history. So, you know, I give Claire a lot of credit for asking about the details, as painful as it is, we're just like her. So, we're going to get her that information. I will say that for this specific one, this is a really important one because as we move from the third round in affordable housing to the fourth round, right now we're working on our fair share housing and element plan in the planning board. We are pedal of the metal right now through June, and it's going to be an exhaustive process. But these are literally our sixth man or woman on our basketball team. All of these consultants are, we can plug them in. They're in the game. They know what we're doing. They advocate for the city. And I'm just really confident and excited to have all of these consultants as a part of our team. So, I'd like to move this resolution.
So moved.
Comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
Council president.
Yes, please, Councilman Boyer.
I can't help but think that if you are an attorney and you're not involved in the housing game, you are dropping the ball. Because this is a racket. I mean, the original contract at $40,000 tripled, tripled from 40 to $108,000 over affordable housing, whether you like it or not, you know, whatever. Lawyers are making a ton of money. I mean, we could have built at least one little tiny house with $108,000. I mean, this is such a racket. When these bills come in and I look at these attorney fees, I'm like, what is going on here? I'm sorry. That's more of a comment than anything. I just, I, this affordable housing stuff is so expensive. I mean, y'all don't even know, right? I mean, when the government came out with this, they must have sat in a room full of lawyers who all said, this is a great idea, you know, because, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. No offense, Mr. Jacoby.
I don't do affordable housing. I'm a fool.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Hamlet, you know, previewed a fair amount of it. I just wanted to add, I know that in addition to our Affordable Housing Council, we have an outside consultant. We have an in-house municipal housing liaison. And I want us as a group to ensure that we are paying the right person to do the right piece of the job. Because the lawyer always seems the most, to have the highest billing rate. The other two are sunk costs. And that, I think, is a group I'd like us to commit to.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Just one more.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
And it even gets further complicated. Now, we're looking to approve the state plan and do cross-acceptance, which probably means not too much for all of you. But when you look at some of the duplicative processes that our engineers have to do with the mapping and the lawyer's fees, it becomes even more maddening. And I've expressed my frustration at the Union County meeting a month or so ago around just really keeping that taxpayer dollar safe. And that if we see something that we've already paid for, we're going to let them know. Because that's probably the most frustrating thing of being an elected official is wasting taxpayer dollars. It's something we don't want to do. But note that we are 100% every day, Tammy. We're at her door. And if we have questions, we're looking out for your tax dollars as much as we can in this environment.
Thank you. I'm just going to finish out, I mean, two things. One, the funds for this, Ms. Baldwin, if I'm not mistaken, these come out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, correct?
In large part, most of them, yes.
Right. So, the vast majority of this is not being built to the taxpayer. It comes from our trust fund that as development happens, there's a fee that builders have to pay into this fund, which in theory is supposed to go and support affordable housing. Councilman Boyer pointed it out, I think, you know, and there is, it is funny, except it's really sad and makes me angry, actually. Because he's right. This money that we have should be going to build affordable housing. And it goes to pay lawyers and city planners and consultants, everything but housing. And the people in Trenton who wrote this Byzantine arcane legal language, they all know it. They all know it. It's a scam. And the sad truth is, it means we have less affordable housing than we should have because of the rules that they put in place. And you need hours and hours and hours of legal people to deal with all this stuff. And the people who make money are the lawyers, the consultants, and the ultimate beneficiary of all this stuff are developers who want density. And the least, the persons who really need this stuff, who are the people who need housing, they're last in line. And that's what's really sad about this resolution. So...
Council President?
Yes?
Just let me follow up with one thing, so that we all can put this into context, right? I'm in negotiation, talking to the Summit Housing Authority, and they want to know how much money we have in our fund, our Affordable Housing Fund, right? So now we're talking about $108,000. And that's not including last year and the year before that and the year before that. And so I'm looking at the work that needs to be done on Weaver Street, Glenwood, and Vita Gala, our senior citizens' building, right? Stairs, windows, elevators, you know, AC units. I mean, how many HVACs could this have purchased, right? How many, you know, the crumbling stairs, right? The getting the elevators working. So I just want to put it in, like, context so that our residents, so that you can see, well, man, that money is coming out of this fund that could be helping these folks in our town, you know? And, you know, it is sad. It really is sad. So, yeah, call your politicians in Trenton if you're a little outraged about it. You know, they're tired of hearing from me. So, but I just wanted to point that out, just to put it in context.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 11777. This is authorizing a grant application submission to the 2025 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program and execute grant agreement for the Tulip Street Improvement Project Phase Two, which would be Ashland Road to Springfield Avenue, whereas the Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Program provides matching grants to municipal governments in Union County for assistance in stimulating the development of public projects to local municipalities. Therefore, is resolved by the Common Council of the City of Summit that the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to submit a 2025 Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Application to the Union County, sorry, to the Union County Board of County Commissioners to provide funding assistance for the Tulip Improvement Project Phase Two with an estimated total project cost of $500,000. If the grant is awarded, the City of Summit is responsible for match, 50% matching funds. With that being said, I think this is a great grant. Excited about this. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? All right. Any comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Get all the fun ones tonight. Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11821, which authorizes the submission of an award extension request to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Canoe Brook Parkway Improvement Project. This resolution, the, is, the resolution authorized a bid advertisement for the project was scheduled for April 22. However, the director further advises that the details regarding the upgrades to traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements took a significant time and spanned multiple governing bodies and several public outreach meetings. In order to rebid, sorry, in addition to the time it took devoted to traffic and pedestrian improvement discussions, if the city does not receive any successful bids for the project, it would result in the need to rebid the project. And therefore, in order to retain the grant funding, the director is recommending a request be submitted to NJTOT. So this would give us a six-month extension. If I can just dumb it down for all of you, this is the Canoe Brook Parkway paving drainage and sidewalk plan. We had one meeting with residents, geez, four or five months ago. We had a second meeting within the last 10 days. My memory escapes me, but within the last 10 days. So we've revised those plans, but now we need to authorize an extension so that we can, and we're compiling all of that information right now for Canoe Brook. So I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? I thought we were going to have a comment. I was excited. I was really excited. All right. Comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, please. Councilman Boyer.
I'm going to roll here. So, there's a lot of work to be done with this project, though. Councilwoman Hamlet, I know that the residents came in, you met with the residents, they liked some proposals, but we still need to get there. I know in committee, we talked about some things like trees, like fully grown trees that have been there for 800 years being removed. I'm concerned about that, actually, you know? I like trees. I like our old trees. And knocking 20, 25 of them, 15 of them down concerns me. So, I know this isn't a done deal. This is just extending the contract so that we can make sure that we have the money. But I know this is an ongoing, ongoing process, though, right?
Yep. I mean, the original grant was to actually pave most of the road. And then I think I apparently walked some kids to school one day because the parents were complaining that the kids were falling into the holes. So then subsequently, PSENG paved the whole road. So now we have $1 million without any road paving, and we still want to do the sidewalks and the drainage. And we did come up with some really good traffic calming solutions. I think Aaron and Carol Oso, you guys did a great job. I think hopefully we get there. Council President, you gave some comments around, we just really need to make sure that the majority of the residents on this street want this. So send your feedback soon to Director Schreger.
Yep. Other comments? Councilman Palowski?
Yeah. And so, and we talked about this at the last Canoe Brook Parkway meeting, but I wanted to say it, that wasn't recorded or anything like that. Like Councilwoman Hamlet just said, the original purpose of this grant was to work on drainage, right? A lot of people don't know this, drainage and road paving. A lot of people don't know this, but this area of Summit is built on a lake that they filled in at some point in time. And so I just want to make sure, because I know a lot of, it has morphed into a sidewalk project. And so, that's great. People want sidewalks. You know, we'll figure that out. But I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the drainage issues. Because when you, in adding the sidewalks, we're not taking away from the street, right? So, we're going to be taking away from, you know, pervious ground where water goes. And we're also going to have to take down 27 trees. And we can plant more trees, and they'll grow probably quicker than 800 years, but they'll grow. But those trees that are there now also soak up water. And so if water and drainage is truly an issue there, I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that while we're hyper-focused on sidewalks. So...
Councilwoman Cumson?
Thank you. Director Schreger, we talked, and when we spoke, you mentioned that this grant was for safety, and you threw a lot of things in there, right? And drainage was one of them. But I don't know that it was specifically for drainage. I think it was really about safety overall. So I just, I just wanted to make a few points. One, we're a walking town, okay? Kids, starting in third grade, children are allowed to walk to school. They need a safe route to walk to school. And they don't have that on Canoe Brook Parkway right now. And it's something that I hear quite a bit. For years, people have been asking me, long before I was really even involved in politics at all. People are like, when are we going to get sidewalks on Canoe Brook Parkway? It's $1 million of grant money, okay? So it's, we should take this money. We should get the sidewalks. I know Director Schreger is going to do his best to mitigate, you know, pulling out any trees. He's going to do his best. He's always really, really helpful with the neighbors. And, you know, he just, I can't say enough good things about him. So I know he's going to do a great job, and we should take this money. Because, I mean, I think we lost our funding for Glenside. Like, any sidewalk money that we can get, we should take. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to comment? Director Schreger?
Sure. Through you, Council President. Just to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Hamlet had said, is we had an initial July kickoff meeting last year, which was really, it had no plans. It was just kind of getting feedback. So from that, we prepared the first round of concept plans that were distributed at the end of last year. Had a very well-attended meeting towards the end of last year, which resulted in some more tweaks to what is still just a concept plan, which is posted on our webpage and has been circulated amongst, I know, the governing body and the neighborhood. So, we did have a meeting last week where we obtained more feedback. And from that, we'll be working on more of a final design so we can kind of hammer down what we will do drainage-wise, how can we reduce any tree loss, and items like that. But, you know, the consensus has generally been more in favor of sidewalk than not, very much in favor of traffic calming, not in favor of medians or reducing the width of the road. So that's all been taken into consideration. Keeping trees, planting trees will be done, and then upgrading the drainage as much as we can as part of this project. So paving will be limited because a lot of it was done, but that's the plan right now. So we are still in the, you know, moving from concept to a more final design phase. And we'll have some of those details then.
Great. Thank you.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Director Schreger, have you received the response about the grant for Glenside Avenue?
Yes, through you again, Council President. So, as was mentioned there, the Glenside Avenue, which is the grant that we have lost, or we were earmarked and promised through the federal government, was for Glenside Avenue, which is drainage and sidewalk. So we have, through our grant-writing team, Millennium, has confirmed that the 2025 go with that has, is not going to happen. So we will be, in the next few weeks or months, at a council meeting, be seeking to apply for that again through their next round of funding. But yes, it has been confirmed that Glenside funding, that looked very good, is not looking so good right now.
Thank you. Thank you for confirming. The one thing I can confirm is that we can plant trees, but no one in here will ever see them grow. So, it takes a long time for that to happen. But there used to be a time when we were all talking about, you know, green spaces and save the trees. But I guess we've moved on from that era. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet?
And I would just say, the mayor and I were on with Congressman Kane's office today. And it does look like if we want to submit that for '26, that we can. So we'll obviously advocate for that, as Director Schreger said today.
Thank you. Yeah. I would just, to wrap this up, you know, we're just extending this grant opportunity. There hasn't been anything finalized yet. So if you do live in that community, please reach out to one of your elected representatives or Director Schreger. Give your feedback on what you want. You know, we want to hear it, obviously. You guys, people live there. We have some money. We should use it. But we should use it in a way that people in the neighborhood want to see. So give feedback, please. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Capital Projects, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Promise, I only have two more. Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 11804. As discussed in closed session, the Superintendent of Public Works advises that as a result of the retirement of the former roads foreman effective June 1, vacancies will exist in the Division of Public Works in the positions of assistant foreman, operator, and maintenance worker, and therefore recommends declaring vacancies for these positions, assistant foreman, equipment operator, and maintenance worker. I would like to mention, Rosie, I just realized this, and Tammy, the effective date on this is June 1, 2025, but I think that's changed. So I don't know if that's a Scrivener's error, if we need to change that.
I'd have to look back at the vacancy form.
Right. Because we just approved that vacant, yeah, I think that might be a little bit off. But I'd like to move this resolution to declare the vacancies for assistant foreman, equipment operator, and maintenance worker.
Thank you. Comments, oh, we need a second.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number six, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Okay, last one, I promise. Thank you, Council President, 11830. As discussed in closed session, members of common council would like to appoint Lauren Rugiero as resident member of the Arts Committee. And I would like to move this resolution. This is a three-year term, and congratulations to this appointee we voted for.
Need a second?
I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Councilman Schreger, thanks for hanging out.
Thank you.
Or Director Schreger. Sorry.
Thank you, Aaron.
You can stay if you want.
Get out of here.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right. We're moving along to Community Programs and Parking Services. We have one resolution from that committee. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11839 to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Programs Administrative Assistant. This is to replace, irreplaceable employee Maria Hughes, who has worked for the city for over 40 years and has been with the Department of Community Programs for the last 25 years. And if you remember, she was married to the former clerk.
I do.
Not you.
Not me. I'm current.
Current, the former clerk. And for his, so between the two of them, they had worked here for 100 years, right?
Well, David Hughes was here for 42, I believe, and Maria's here 46.
So, 90, almost 90 years.
Yeah.
So, we'd like to thank her for her service. And with that, I would like to move this resolution.
Do I have a second? All right. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have one resolution from Administrative Policies and Community Services. Councilwoman Cumson?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11842, and this resolution supports the state bill S2511-A4051, the Humane Pet Store Bill. At the council meeting on January 21st of this year, Larry Cohen, a retired LCJ SMS teacher, requested this resolution. I think I might see Mr. Cohen in the audience. Since that time, I have received many emails and calls from residents in support of this resolution. The Humane Pet Store Bill aims to prohibit the sale of cats, dogs, and rabbits in pet shops within New Jersey. The importance of supporting this bill stems from concerns related to animal welfare and the sourcing of these animals. Three key reasons to support this bill is combating puppy mills and kitten mills. A primary goal of the bill is to curb the operation of puppy mills and kitten mills. These are large-scale breeding facilities that often prioritize profit over the health and welfare of the animals. These facilities frequently have poor living conditions, inadequate veterinary care, and contribute to the overpopulation of animals. Promoting adoption. By restricting pet shop sales, the bill encourages the adoption of animals from shelters and rescue organizations. This helps to alleviate overcrowding in shelters and provides homes for animals in need. This bill does allow adoption events to be held at pet stores. Consumer protection. This bill aims to protect consumers from unknowingly purchasing animals with health problems that are often prevalent in animals sourced from mills. It also promotes responsible breeding practices. This bill is co-sponsored by our local Assemblywomen, Michelle Mazzacutis and Nancy Munoz. Summit has had a similar ordinance since 2019, and this will not change the way business is conducted in Summit. With the passing of this resolution, Summit will join 14 other Union County towns in asking the state to pass this bill to prevent supporting puppy mills. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yeah, I would just say, I think I was on council when we adopted the first ordnance or resolution that banned pet stores, I believe. Yeah. We prohibited retail pet stores in town, even though we don't have, didn't have retail pet stores. But we did it to kind of go along with what the state of New Jersey has done. And I'm happy to support this resolution. I think, you know, I know for years, it has been illegal for pet stores in New Jersey to sell these poor animals from puppy mills. But I guess this is yet another step. I don't know if there's been bad enforcement or what have you, but I'm happy to join in and support this resolution. I'm super happy that the law that our Assemblywomen have helped sponsor in Trenton, at least continues to allow adoption, which I think is super, super important, to give these, some animals who need homes, homes. So I'm fully supportive. Councilman Palowski?
And I think it's still legal to breed and sell puppies.
Yeah. Breeders are fine. Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving along. Law and Labor, one resolution there. Councilman Palowski?
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 11812, a resolution authorizing the execution of government energy aggregation program agreements, which will allow us to move forward with our exploration of a GEA program. We've discussed this quite a bit already tonight. With a couple of Scrivener's errors that I can work out with the city clerk, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving along to Finance. Finance, number one, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID 11807, authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation. Until we have a budget, we are operating on, under a temporary budget that allows us to spend 26.5% of what we spent last year. That operates on the theory that we spend on a straight line throughout the year, but spending is lumpy. A lot of it is front-loaded. So we need to pay our bills, and we need to spend more than essentially a quarter of our budget in the first part of the year. State law requires, calls this an emergency. It is not an emergency. It's fairly routine. We do it several times every year during the first quarter. And I move to adopt this resolution.
A second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Council President, we need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Cumson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTirren?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Finance, number two, Councilwoman Toth.
I believe we're pulling this. Is that correct, City Administrator Baldwin? Or did?
I don't believe so. I think...
I don't believe so.
We were expecting some documentation from Summit Downtown on this?
No, we actually sent, Megan Champney sent a letter a week ago telling them, advising them, they had said that they had secured insurance. And she just sent them a letter saying this was on the agenda, and if you have any problems, let us know. And I don't believe they've ever heard.
Also, if I may add, Megan mentioned that every time there's an event, they would provide the proof of insurance, and we would have it reviewed by our risk manager and confirm that it was the appropriate coverage. So it'll be checked every time.
Okay. I am mistaken, then. This is ID 11814, authorizing the removal of Summit Downtown Inc. from the City of Summit's insurance coverage. This is not about saving us money, unfortunately. This is about risk management. If Summit Downtown is covered by our property and casualty insurance, they are responsible for providing the city with all of the sub-insurance information from all of the performers, all of the vendors, everyone who shows up at any city event. And this became particularly onerous for them. They've decided to get their own insurance so that they are, so that they are not the conduit to the city, but they simply, the vendors have to provide them with the assurances that SDI requires. the, with the assurances that SDI requires. Um, I think it simplifies things for them. Um, maybe it saves us a little bit of money, but not a whole lot. Um, so I move this ordinance for, for, for adoption, or I move this resolution for adoption, I'm sorry.
A second. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Councilwoman Hamlet, do, do you have any, because I didn't, I read it.
I'm Toth, not Hamlet.
Councilwoman Toth, you're right. I'm sorry. Shame on me. It's getting late, I guess. But, you know, I, I hear some concern, um, and we didn't talk about this previously. I read it, but do you have any concerns? I'd like to hear.
No, no. Um, oh, we're gonna get weedy, and so many people want to talk to us. Um, historically, I mean, many of the vendors that, that appear at SDI events, I mean, it's the guy with the guitar on the street corner. Um, it's the person selling crafts at Arts and Cars, or the person with, with, with the, the antique car. Um, and historically, Summit Downtown had gotten hold-harmless agreements from these folks. Um, and in recent years, the city's risk manager wanted certificates of insurance from them, adding the ins, the city as an additional insured. Um, and the, the, um, Assistant Director of SDI was spending all her time chasing down the vendors, trying to get these certificates, um, because again, the guy on the corner with the guitar, it's not his top priority to go talk to his insurance agent and deal with all of this. Um, so, SDI eventually decided they'd get their own insurance and one that would allow them to, to just take the whole harmless letters rather than the certificates of insurance.
So, do you see any liability?
I do not see an increased risk. Um, SDI has been operating suc- successfully this way, oh, since long before I was their treasurer, since probably long before Councilmember Smallwood was their treasurer, so that goes back a couple of decades.
All right.
Um, and if I've got that.
I don't know about decades.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, um, and if I totally misstated it, uh, the city administrator will correct me.
All good?
Okay.
All right, um, any other comments from council? Yep, the only com, I, I'm gonna make a comment. I think SDI is a, a standalone entity. The state created, uh, the ability to create these special improvement districts, and SDI is that entity that helps manage events in downtown. They have two real, uh, primary objectives, is to increase foot traffic to our downtown and to beautify our downtown. We can argue what, you know, how much we're doing one versus the other, and, and we, we're, we've been talking about that. Um, it takes money to do that. I'm honestly just very disappointed about this, uh, request, because insurance costs money. They're basically a free rider off of our JIF, our JIF right now. They have to do some work in order to be a free rider off of that. Now they're gonna have to take money that they were, that they could use to beautify our downtown, or to, uh, increase foot traffic for our downtown, and now they're gonna have to spend it on getting their own insurance. And I just don't think that that's right, so I'm gonna be voting no on this. Um, but, uh, that's my comment. Oh, yeah, Madam Mayor.
Um, I was gonna ask, uh, our city solicitor to just, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I, I still believe that SDI, if they're holding events on city property, and they're still going to have to go through our risk manager.
Absolutely.
So, I just wanna clarify that.
This is for non-city property events, um, and, and their, my understanding is there's a representation made to Megan, they've got their own insurance, so.
Right.
There's no point in having double insurance.
Correct. I just wanna be clear that there's still work to be done on their beha, on, on their part in order to hold events. Doesn't take away their work.
And Council President, if I may, there, there, I think this is in response to a change in the city's risk management requirements, that they just weren't able to, to meet in a timely manner.
Fair enough. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yeah, I'm, Council President, with all due respect, I'm not sure, I understand you're voting no, but I'd like to learn more, if you're, if you're voting no on it, that I'm concerned that we don't have enough information, because, did they want to come off of the insurance, or was it risk management? What was the, I just don't know. Who initiated the, the request?
My understanding, Councilwoman Toth, corrects me if I'm wrong, that they initiated this. They've gone out and said, I think you're, you're right, we have requirements for insurance that they found onerous, uh, to, to do, so they've decided to go and get private insurance. We will still have them, uh, requirements for them to hold events on city property that are gonna indemnify us against damages, but they'll, they'll do that through their own, uh, insurance, uh, people. Previously, if they had all the right documentation, we would be doing that through the, the JIF, which is the government insurance fund that municipalities use, um, in case they, there's some, um, unforeseen event that we need insurance on. So, that, that's what happens. But this is, this is, uh, from SDI.
Right, so considering that I'm one of the representatives on that board, can we, uh, can I motion to table this until the next meeting? Is it, is it?
You can motion it. You need a second.
I guess my question is, is the timeline, is the timeline where they need to do this?
I think, I think that they, they were notified that they don't have insurance. There's a letter last week from Megan to them. It was either Thursday, once you're thirsty of last week.
Thursday.
Uh, the letter went out. Um, you know, I, I mean, I think that the issue here is, is that your insurance carrier wants an answer, so you don't wanna have something on your insurance if they're not complying with their requirements. So, you can always, if, if they change their mind, we can always put them back on, but they did represent that they have insurance.
I second, I second your, your motion.
Thank you, Jamel.
Because you have to move on the.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to move on the motion to table? Any comments on tabling?
I, I have a comment about it, period, 'cause it's, you know, if, if they're talking about insurance not on city property, I mean, the whole point of Summit Downtown Inc. is within the Cid, which is the Special Improvement District, which is all city property. So, where are they holding these events? Because they're not holding the events outside of the Cid.
Right.
I don't think so.
But may I?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
So, um, in the past, SDI, with their property use application, has had to provide us with insurance certificates and proof of insurance for all of the vendors that participate in every one of their events. We've also asked them to provide hold-harmless agreements signed by each vendor. They found that onerous, and so they figured they could bypass some of that paperwork by perhaps finding their own policy, but my humble opinion, they still in their, it's in their best interest to still collect those insurance certificates from every vendor, even though they're not coming to us anymore. So, I don't know what paperwork they're saving, but they have, they have advised us during a, a property use application meeting that they had their own insurance. So, with that, we reported that to the, um, administration, and we explained that, since they have their own insurance, or why are we still paying for insurance to additionally cover them? And so, that's when the conversation began, you know, show us your proof of insurance so that we can, with all good conscience, remove you from our, our policy. And they've ensured, they've assured us that they have it, and with every event that they have, they have to provide us now one insurance certificate from SDI instead of giving us all. But we reserve the right in this resolution to ask upon written demand for proof of insurance from every one of their vendors if we so choose. So, that's still in here. So, they're not, they're not saving a lot by doing this.
And, I'm, I'm sorry, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Smallwood.
We, we know that Megan sent out the letter.
I saw it.
Right?
Yep.
But did we, we got nothing back to show proof that they have insurance?
My understanding is that Megan requested it many times and, and didn't get anything.
Did not get anything.
Nothing.
City Administrator Walden, do you have any insight on that?
Yes, through you, Council President, and I think that probably added to Councilwoman Toth's confusion for a moment, because I have not received any proof. I asked for a declaration page, uh, Megan Champney asked for documents, we've not received any proof, other than an email assuring us that she is obtaining that from their insurance broker. And then their insurance broker was on an email, but there was no real confirmation saying he was looking to get further confirmation. So, it's a, it's a little bit confusing. I, I don't, they assure us that they have it, we've, we've sent a letter, um, they're aware that we're removing them from our policy. Uh, I couldn't tell you right now what the cost difference is of having them or not having them. Um, I'd have to look into that. I, I don't know if that's broken down in our insurance bill for me to see, so I'd have to check into that. Um, but right now, this was the path recommended.
So, yes, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor.
I was just gonna say, I think, I think the sort of crux of the conversation should be around, you know, liability to the city in, if we make this decision, and I think, um, our city solicitor advised, uh, Megan Champney in exactly how to word this letter so that we are protected. So, can you clarify that?
Yeah, the, the letter was, uh, clearly worded, saying that you've made representations that you have it, we want a copy of it and be advised that you'll be removed from the city's insurance, uh, as of this date. So, if you guys, you have a motion to table, so you have to vote on that, um, so it'll be tabled, but you need, if they're not gonna provide proof, they have to go through all the, uh, machinations that Rosie said, and these aren't machinations that the city council made up. This is done by the Joint Insurance Fund, that doesn't just insure you, it ensures municipalities throughout the state. Uh, there's multiple joint insurance funds, but they do that because of, of the potential liability, and, you know, if somebody slips and falls on the sidewalk, or somebody gets hurt at an event, there's typically lit- litigation, and that's who's defending you. And so, they have very strict requirements that if you're involved on city property, you have to provide proof of insurance. It's no different than when, if somebody leases out a gym, they get proof of insurance that, you know, if something happens, you're gonna help, your insurance is gonna help cover the costs. So, if you table, that's, you know, you have to vote on that, but, you know, within two weeks, hopefully you'll have your declaration page.
So, I guess, like, we, we do have a, I'm sorry, Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, so you just said, hopefully we'll have a declaration page. Um, any, any, anyone who's ever looked at a certificate of insurance knows that at the very top of it, it says, this is not evidence of insurance. Um, so, I'd like to see a declaration page that notes us, um, as a, as an additional insured. I'd like to see the whole policy and probably also the endorsement that names us. Um, also, you know, SDI's insurance coverage was served as the primary policy. Do we know what the limits are? Okay? Are they gonna have, are they gonna have?
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, make a comment. I think there's been enough comments around that there's a lot that we don't know about this, that maybe the prudent thing to do is to table it. I think Councilwoman Toth had good instincts, right out of the chute on this. Um, so, uh, I think, what, uh, we, there is a motion from Councilwoman Hamlet. Would all in favor of tabling this resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're gonna table this.
That was fun.
Um, all right, uh, that was a doozy at the end of our, our resolutions. We're now on to our consent agenda. Uh, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, any comments?
I'm gonna ask for, uh, oh, would you like to? Yep.
Uh, please.
Sorry, not to further complicate the evening with, uh, Summit Downtown, but, um, I think we need to think about the fact that we are about to vote on all of the events for Summit Downtown, and we don't have insurance.
Well, I don't think that that's right. We, they are currently covered by our JIF, assuming that they get all the documentation to us. Yeah.
And their, their first meeting is very soon.
Okay, so, okay. Um, but my second, the reason I actually pulled it, the reason I was pulling it out to begin with, um, I just wanted to confirm, I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, I believe that they used to pay us for parking spots on days where they would have an event that they were taking, like, for instance, the Bank Street Lot. Um, and I didn't see anything, maybe I missed it, but.
I don't recall them paying for parking spots. They have paid overtime for DPW assistance and police, maybe not parking.
I'm, I'm, like, yeah.
I'll look back and see if maybe it dropped off, and, and we'll.
Okay. Kevin, do you, do you know that, kind of, we, they used to pay, urge Claire, do you know, they used to pay, we, they, they paid a preset amount for events where they were taking our parking away. Um, I remember.
Hold on one sec, we're, we're, our meeting's getting all confused. Are you requesting to pull the safety and health, uh, resolutions from the consent agenda? Is that what you're asking for, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Um, sorry, no, I think what, I think my, never mind, I'm talking about that.
Just the first one? I'm sorry, just the first one? Number one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's.
Now I'm losing it.
So, at that stage, um, Councilman Boyer, uh, would you want to just introduce, uh, safety and health on the consent agenda, um, at this time?
Through you, Council President. So, you wanna pull all?
No, no, just, we're gonna.
No, I understand that, but that is inclusive of, like, ten events, right?
No, no, we're not pulling it, we're gonna talk about it and then vote on it. Is that, yeah, that's all it is. You're just gonna introduce it, we're gonna talk about it as a normal resolution, rather than being bundled with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Council President. This is Consent Agenda 11798, granting permission to set forth conditions to the 2025 Summit Downtown Incorporated events.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Palowski?
I'm going back to the insurance, I'm sorry. Um, so, currently SDI is covered by our policies. And until we pass a resolution removing them from it, they'll continue to be covered by our policies. So, if we're, if we okay all of these events, and we're not satisfied with the insurance that SDI has procured for itself, we can keep them on our insurance if we are so inclined, correct?
I think that's right, but, um, Mr. Jacoby can probably answer this. If, if we were to do that, we would require them to all, have, give us all the documentation, or we would not allow them to hold the event on city property.
Either way.
Right now, that, since you tabled it, they're still under our insurance, and they have to comply with all of our joint insurance funds and risk manager, uh, requirements, which is to provide the whole harmlessness, the proof of insurance, et cetera. If they don't do it, the event doesn't happen.
The resolution language has to change, because this was based on them having the insurance and us removing it, so there's some language changes that have to happen in here.
So, we need to table this as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, do I have a motion to table this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's Table Two. Okay, so, now, we've got the consent agenda. Um, so, going back, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be set, Safety and Health number two, and, uh, two from Law and Labor, and one from Finance, as a, as a, uh, as it's presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Comments from council?
Is the, uh, Department of Community, is the Department of Community Programs insured to coordinate these events?
They're in our insurance.
Yes. Um, other comments? All right, all in favor?
Council, hold on. What? Sorry, Council President, um, so, we just tabled both of the Summit Downtown Inc.
Yeah, the two SDIs.
Right, yeah, okay, so, 'cause that, I mean, they have an event coming up soon, I believe.
We still have one more council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that concludes the business part of our meeting. We're now on to our public comment section. I know there's a lot of people in the audience who have been waiting patiently. Thank you so much for doing that. I would just say, if you do want to make a public comment, please line up. When you do approach the podium, please give your name and your address. We'll have a lot of people talking. Just, please keep your comments under three minutes, please.
Matthew Fonzo, 12 Washington Avenue. D E F O N Z O. He said I had to spell my name, so. I've been a volunteer coach for Summit Youth Football. The upcoming season marks my 26 years as a coach. I'm also head of Summit Youth Football. I've been aware of practice game issues on our existing fields for years for various teams because of lighting. I would like to express how the light project would impact not just football, but also lacrosse and soccer as well. Coaching the sixth grade team for multiple years, I can say firsthand, the practice is challenging in the dark. This also makes practice unsafe. Because of grade priority, sixth grade is pushed to the far end of the field where the lighting isn't as bright. While I do not coach these other sports, I can attest to back-to-back practices with soccer and see darkness descends on the playing field, that division is compromised. This project would assist in our limited sight for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade football. This would be beneficial to varsity soccer, with whom we share the practice field in terms of back-to-back practices under games. For those who do not know, varsity sports have precedence over the youth sports. That means varsity games have priority over youth football practice. Having lights at Tatlock would ensure, would enable holding late-season games, I'm sorry, enable soccer holding late-season games now to be safer, and for players not to have games that be called because of darkness. Lacrosse would also be able to practice youth in varsity without running out of daylight. Friday night football is a welcome fun activity for our youth in all grade levels and disciplines. Given my expensive use of summits, fields, and having been exposed to other sports, practice times, and games, I am of full support of lights on Tatlock Field for our sport to benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have a written comment...
He's already emailed it.
Oh, you have it, okay. Just, for people who do speak and have a prepared comment, please just make sure you get it to our clerk, so they can put it, so she can put it in the record, please.
Hi, I'm Vicki Freeman, 46 Shadyside. Last council meeting, a fellow resident shared that a petition was created urging council to move forward with the project to light Tatlock Fields. The support of this petition has been overwhelming. In two weeks, we've gathered over 2,000 signatures, and we're not stopping. By comparison, opposition to Broad Street West had 1,700 signatures over five months. The swift response to our petition clearly indicates that we have broad support for Tatlock lights. We represent all ages from 18 to 75, members of both political parties, and residents from all over town, including all school districts. We're also proud to share that the petition is split roughly 40% in Ward One, 60% in Ward Two, including over 30 signatures in the neighborhood around Tatlock. We also want to highlight that we have taken the integrity of this petition very seriously. Specific measures were employed to ensure signatures are all Summit residents, no one under 18, and no duplicates. We've heard some chatter online accusing our broad coalition of including younger residents of college age. Yes, it does. Who better understands how lights at Tatlock would benefit our town than those citizens who just recently grew up here? They have a unique understanding of the issue because they have lived it, and for those still living it, here's the problem we need to solve. Currently, half of rec football practices are in the dark. Soccer and lacrosse practice in the outfield of baseball fields, which means baseball and softball can't play then. There is demand, but no room for more players or sports. A newer sport, girls' flag football, has to practice and play games in New Providence. Even worse, Summit will soon lose control of scheduling at Glen Side Fields to Union County. 70% of Summit High School kids participate in sports, and our rec sports programs are great community building for our town. Just think of the friends made on a Summit sideline. And don't we want more of our kids outdoors, especially in winter when the sun sets at 4:30, and spending less time indoors on screens? We, the co-authors, believe that lighting Tatlock fields is the smartest, most cost-effective solution to growing, to the growing field space problem. It means our children won't have to sacrifice valuable practice time because the sun sets early. It means we can finally meet the demand for field space without burdening taxpayers with expensive alternatives. It also creates a new, safe, lighted outdoor space for our citizens to play outside and exercise during winter evenings. Our petition also importantly advocates reasonable accommodations to alleviate neighborhood concerns over traffic, parking, et cetera. We believe these concerns can and will be addressed. These lights have been designed with the utmost care to respect the community. The light pollution created by this project is effectively zero for the surrounding neighborhood, and the impact to the environment is negligible. So now that the voters have spoken, the question sits with the council. Where do you stand, and when will you act?
Thank you.
If she could email her statement.
If you could email your statement, or just drop it.
I'll bring it up.
Yeah, that works too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Adriana Alarcon, A L A R C O N, Springfield Avenue. Okay, this is reference the ongoing issues with Salt Brook. We purchased our home in 2011 and have been experiencing significant property loss, particularly following major weather events. We observed and reported to the town land loss after Hurricane Irene in 2011. The damage worsened after Superstorm Sandy in 2012, and each following year, we lost more and more. In August 2019, the devastation was so bad that we had to file a claim through our homeowners' insurance to cover the loss of landscaping, sprinklers, and fencing, fencing which we've had to replace many times since. As of 2011, we have been in contact with the town, reporting damage, and relying on assurances that the issues were being addressed. Despite these assurances, and my adherence to all relevant laws and regulations, we have experienced devastating land loss and are left with very little land and hope. A huge culprit of the damage is the neglect of a broken county pipe that runs under our property and empties water runoff from Springfield Avenue into Salt Brook. During rain, water from the pipe erodes the earth underneath. The pipe eventually leads to another break, which causes a chain reaction of land all around the pipe, eventually trees collapse into the brook as well. Subsequent breaks, most notably after Hurricane Ida in 2021, have exacerbated the problem, altering the water flow and washing away more land. The damage now occurs even with moderate rainfall. To this date, we have lost 2/3, 2/3 of our land. In the area around the pipe, adjacent to that, we have lost half of our land, half of it. Furthermore, we have increased water runoff due to local construction. In 2015, the property across the street was redeveloped from one house into three, which increased the amount of paved surface area. With a recent sale of an adjacent property, this issue's likely to get worse with the construction of two new homes. This means the local area went from two homes to five in just 10 years. I'm concerned that the increased runoff will inevitably lead to more damage to my property and the surrounding ones as well. As it stands, the brook, as it approaches our property and in the area of the broken pipe, is starting to now cut a path on trajectory towards Springfield Avenue. This part of the damage includes two other properties in addition to ours. Putting emotional and financial distress aside, the ongoing land loss is a critical concern, and every rainfall causes additional worry. I would like to thank Councilwoman Hamlet, Councilman Boyer, and Mayor Fagan for their efforts thus far. For the rest of the administration, I implore you to give immediate attention to this critical matter. Stabilization as soon as possible is essential until a larger solution can be implemented. I would like for all of you, the next time you look at your backyards, imagine half of it gone. Imagine watching it wash away with every rainfall with your hands tied behind your back. Thank you.
Thank you.
She emailed me.
That's a bigger problem than anything else going on. Maggie Bowman, 40 Lewis Avenue, B A U, M A N. A year ago, I was talking with my father-in-law in Ridgewood about the Tatlock Light Proposal. He listened to my concerns and said, "You know they're gonna put them up, right?" I told him they probably would, but that I have a voice. In the past year, there have been hours of listening sessions in community forums, hundreds of comments on the Google Doc, and countless one-on-one conversations about the Tatlock proposal. Steps three and four of the plan laid out by council a year ago focus on revised plans. The word compromise was used. I looked at the plan today, and I don't see any changes. Are we to believe that no one has had an idea to warrant a revision to the plan? I always think of Summit as a town full of smart, high-achieving people. It's remarkable that there have been no good ideas to prompt an update to this seven-year-old proposal. My biggest concern is safety caused by insufficient parking. Tatlock and Washington have 155 striped spaces compared to over 300 at the high school and over 250 at Jefferson. Street parking during the day is annoying, but whatever, it is what it is. But at night, it's a completely different story. A theft recently happened in the middle of the day on Bedford. The suspicious vehicle was not identified because the street was filled with cars for an event at Oratory. Consider every street around Tatlock lined with parked cars at night. How will police determine who is suspicious and who is apparent or a fan? Is a group of people walking down the street headed to watch the game? Or are they looking for empty houses and checking for unlocked doors? The case for lights centers around wanting more practice space for rec sports. I have an idea that supports practice and reduces the safety concern of jam-packed streets at night. My idea for compromise is to add additional practice lights on the Butler Parkway side of Upper Tatlock. This reduces the height of the lights to not much higher than the tree line. The residents there would be impacted, but if what we are told is true, the new technology will minimize spillover. Maintaining the field as practice only means that there won't be nighttime games, and as a result, minimal nighttime street parking. The field at Upper Tatlock can be easily accessed from Morris Avenue, reducing traffic on Butler. This solution benefits everyone by increasing practice time and decreasing the negative impact on the neighborhood. It's not easy being on the unpopular side of this issue. I've received the petition, and I'm friends with many of the sponsors, but I do think the conversation would be very different if we were talking about lights at Memorial or anywhere else in town. The sports community, I include myself, is strong and passionate, but at the end of the day, it's not about who is louder or more popular. It's about protecting Summit's neighborhoods. It's about this council truly looking at all the facts and considering the permanent negative impact on the quality of life that eight stadium lights would bring to the Tatlock community. Former council president Lisa Allen once spoke about political courage. I hope that this council has it. Stadium lights don't belong at Tatlock or any other field in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. Before the informal meetings with neighbors around Tatlock, you may not have been aware of the impact that parking, traffic, and noise from practices, games, and events have on the Tatlock community. However, now you have been informed, and council even acknowledged at the January 21st meeting that, quote, "There are challenges. It is evident that we need to take every effort to unburden that neighborhood in whatever way we can. We need to take a really close look at those neighbors' concerns around speeding and enforcement, game time traffic patterns, find solutions as we go through the process." Council's solution was to set up a task force to alleviate those negative effects. But this task force has not even met yet. So how can you possibly continue considering a project that will bring additional problems to an admittedly already overburdened area, at night no less, without first fixing those issues that occur during daylight hours? This project should be off the table until the task force has time to at least attempt to unburden the neighborhood. And if you choose to move forward with this project, you are doing it with eyes wide open that many of your constituents are already negatively impacted, and your actions will only further harm the Tatlock families. There is a lacrosse wall, advanced practice area being installed at Tatlock soon. Why aren't we waiting to see how that will help practice issues, as well as see the impact it will have on Tatlock? Too many changes are trying to be forced into a small area too quickly. This also brings up another question. What major improvements have been made to any other field in a residential area in the last 20 years that are on par with the changes at the high school in Tatlock? What other neighborhood has shouldered any more burden for the increasing demand for sports? Washington is the only district with curf fields and lights that directly impact neighbors. So when is it other people's turn to step up? Or will it always be Washington getting bullied to take on more? As neighbors have repeatedly said, most of us have grown to enjoy the hustle, bustle, whistles, cheers, and band playing during the daytime. We are opposed to losing the right to peace, quiet, and darkness in our neighborhood at night, like every other neighborhood around a field enjoys. There are alternatives to this field shortage crisis, and Friday night lights can still happen with a different type of temporary light. But some people have blinders on, so they only see their own benefit, regardless of the detriment and harm it would inflict on Tatlock. So I say to council, it has turned into a circus. This is not a decision that should be made as if voting for Prom King or who yells the loudest. It should be about facts. How are you going to balance the benefit that a resident may get from lights against the persistent and harmful burden the Tatlock families will be forced to bear every night? It is council's duty to ensure proper balance of burden throughout town, and that has not been the case. The Tatlock community is waiting for you to correct this imbalance instead of worsening it. Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Lynette McKee, and I don't have written comments, but I did want to just speak kind of off the cuff. I am the neighbor across the street, actually, I should say, across the creek from Adriana. She's the one that spoke about losing her property on Springfield Avenue. And I have a unique perspective of what's going on, because I am up on the hill, and my view from my kitchen windows shows exactly what's happening with this stormwater drain and how much land is being lost. My heart breaks for this family, because every time we have a storm, we look outside and we see more and more land sliding down. She's lost fences, they've lost, they're, they're getting very close to losing, they have a detached garage with a little porch area, and I can only imagine what that family must be going through right now. All of us on the creek are concerned about the damaged drain. I know we have all kind of voiced our concerns over the years, but I would tell you, at this stage, in the last seven years or so, and more probably rapidly over the last three, it's just getting worse and worse, and it's really becoming kind of an environmental disaster. I mean, these are, people are at threat of losing their properties, and especially, you know, their properties, their property values. Everybody along the creek is affected. I've lost several trees as a result of it, but fortunately, my elevation is keeping me, you know, at least our yard and our home safe. But the people on Springfield don't have that luxury, and I think this is something, I mean, I, I mean, I personally feel like this is what we have a town council for, you know, when somebody has a crisis like this, that, that we need to do what we can to come together and try to save and help these residents of our community. So I just wanted to put that out there. I also wanted to offer up, I have several photos and I have videos of what happens during these storms. If anybody's interested in looking at those, I'm happy to pass those along.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'm sorry, I promised my husband I wasn't gonna say anything, but I have, I can't, I'm gonna re-nig on that. So, couple things.
Name and address.
I'm getting there, hold on. Mary D. Fonzo, 12 Washington Avenue. D E capital F O N Z O. I didn't prepare anything, I'm sorry, because I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I have to tell you, I grew up here, now my kids have grown up here. All my kids were three-season athletes. And for this lighting thing to become an issue, I know that my husband is where his heart is coming from, because he's been coaching for so long. And having had three kids who are athletes, I myself was one, I was a one-season athlete, I can attest to the fact that these lights are necessary. That being said, I invite anybody who is complaining about the traffic can come down to my side of town, Bryant Park. My family lives across the street, my daughter lives across the street, and my mother lives across the street. I grew up there, my kids grew up there. And when I tell you that we have 24/7, because now the county has decided, oh, the park's gonna be open 24 hours a day. So you want to talk traffic, you want to talk commotion, there's people using that park all the time, it's county park. So when I fought the East Coast Greenway thing going through with those, with this park line, I was told, "It's park, it's progress, it's progression." But you know what? I'm gonna say the same thing. Installing these lights is progression. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all want to see somebody hold a breath for three minutes? Miles Calmenson, 67 Butler Parkway. So I'd actually like to take a slight detour from the topic of lights to talk about something much less controversial. I want to talk about hamburgers. Now hamburgers are one of my weaknesses. Now hamburgers are one of my weaknesses. I don't have much of a sweet tooth, but I do love a good burger. I especially love the Chipotle bacon burger over at the Committed Pig Downtown. You know the one with Munster cheese and the onion ring on top? It's, that one's probably in my top five, maybe even top three burgers of all time. So speaking of the Committed Pig, you all know the story behind the Committed Pig, or at least the name? So it goes like this, a pig and a chicken are walking down the road. The chicken says, "Hey, pig, I was thinking we should open a restaurant." The pig replies, "Hmm, maybe, what would we call it?" The chicken responds, "How about ham and eggs?" And the pig thinks for a second and says, "No, thanks, I'd be committed, but you'd only be involved." And I think that's appropriate when we talk about the lights tonight. Ms. Freeman said the petition has a couple thousand signatures. And I want you to ask yourselves, how many of those signatures are chickens and how many of them are pigs? How many are just involved and how many are really committed? Really, really wanting something is not commitment. If their quality of life won't be affected by the increased traffic or noise, they're probably not committed. They might have kids in sports, but if their kids aren't being turned away due to lack of field space, they're probably not committed. If they don't live in the neighborhood or have any kids in sports and just signed the form because they got an email asking them to sign, well, they're definitely chickens. Now, I get why people would sign. When I first saw the light the field signs up in my neighborhood, my knee-jerk reaction was supportive. I mean, who doesn't like Saturday night lights? Of course, that was before I learned the details. It's easy to get behind something when you have incomplete information. And I've heard a lot of people say, "Let's compromise," but that's been a euphemism for suck it up and do what I want. The petition authors have given in a little bit. They've moved from suck it up to trust us, we'll make it better, but fund the lights anyway. But that's still not real compromise. So I'd like to throw an idea out here. Actually, what I'm going to do, I had an idea and then I heard Maggie speak, and I'm going to riff off of that a little bit. I get there's a sense of urgency here from everybody. They get one shot a year at funding, where we've got three council seats up, so who knows what the situation will be in the fall, and we've also got a looming recession. So there's a good chance, like, this could be the best shot for a while if the economy turns. So if you really feel that you have to fund the lights because time is running out, do what Maggie said, fund it, fund it for the upper field, and do it with a caveat, set the money aside and only release the money once certain criteria is met. It takes the urgency out of the situation, so we're not like fighting like one month out of the year, and then it gets us all working towards the same goal, and that goal is making traffic and noise better in our neighborhood. And that's, that's, okay, I guess I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Do you have a statement to?
I will, I have it on my phone, I'll email it to you.
Perfect, thank you so much. Other comments?
Hi, my name is Julie Broderick, I live at Two Sunset Drive in Summit. I just, I have no prepared remarks, but after hearing a couple of people speak, I just want to remind everyone, and I know everyone knows this, but the thing that sets us apart as a town is our love for the community, our love for our children, and a sense of spirit for our sports. The fact that we have to go off to New Providence to borrow their fields is kind of shameful to Summit. I mean, I just feel like we're such a great town that we actually have to go to another town to play sports. It just doesn't make sense. With all the funds that we have, the people that are supporting this, it's not a popularity contest, it's about what's best for the kids. And at some point, I understand there's going to be sacrifices that have to be made, but it's not a situation of the have and the have-nots. It's a situation of, when you have kids that are playing sports, and I think some of the people around Tatlock may have younger children that are not in that space yet, when you get to that place, you'll understand the importance of having space for your kids, for lights to be on after dark. And I don't think, I think some of the people misspoke when they said there are going to be lights every night, that there's going to be games all the time, that there's going to be traffic, and that council hasn't listened to their position. I think the council has bent over backwards with meetings, with forums, with booster meetings too, where Councilman Smallwood showed up to answer questions. I think that you should be commended for having the patience and the diligence of all of the stuff that you've done to research the lights and to provide an opportunity for all of us as citizens of Summit to come together and discuss an important issue. I don't think it should be tearing us apart, it shouldn't be controversial, I think we should just get together and remind ourselves why we're doing this, and it's for the kids. Thank you.
Hi, Sue McGuire, Madison Avenue. So, the only thing, I did want to say something, and I heard some weird talk about this, but this is not a partisan issue. I heard people are afraid that people aren't going to vote for them if they don't, you know, support the lights or don't support the lights along party lines. I moved to Summit as an independent, I moved near the Washington School and the high school for my kids, so they could be in the other fields, they could be in the activities. I knew what I was getting myself into. There's a lot of hustle and bustle that goes along that part of town. The property values have increased 30% since 2020. They're not going down. Also, you know, Summit is the, was ranked the 26th most wealthiest suburb in the United States. It was ranked, it's ranked in the top five in New Jersey. There's 339 high schools in New Jersey, 80% of them have lighted high school varsity fields. We are Summit, we should have a lighted varsity field for our community. I mean, having to go to other communities because we don't have the lights just doesn't make sense. That's it.
Good evening, Dennis McKeever, 16 Clearview Drive. I'm not here because my wife made me, I'm here really. I'm here because I've worked with the kids in this community for a very long time, whether it's volunteering for youth football, youth baseball. And I am very, very, as a community member who lives along Memorial Field, I'm very, very sensitive to parking issues. And the fields themselves, whether it's for baseball, softball, football, lacrosse, our fields are in need. I've said the word dynamic at all of the various meetings that I've been able to attend that council has arranged, and I think having lights on that field is a step in the right direction. I think having, as Ms. Bowman said, having adequate parking around our fields also has to be a very important consideration. I wish there were more adequate parking around Memorial Field because every Saturday and Sunday I can't get in and out of my driveway. So I'm sensitive that, we're unfortunately a landlocked community and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. But I think our light, our children, the students of the high school, the students in the youth programs do deserve to have enhancements inclusive of the fields, and I am sensitive to those parking needs that have been discussed at every one of the meetings because I think there is probably going to be that traffic impact, you can't deny it. So, thank you very much, thank you for having me. Hopefully I'm not trolled.
Thank you.
Mr. McKeever, you have incredible taste in ties.
Any other member of the public wish to make a comment?
Hello, Zach DiOssi, Manor Hill. Didn't have anything prepared today or written down, but I just wanted to share my sentiment on the lights in Tatlock. I have two boys, 10 and 7, fifth grade and first, and I've coached them in every sport as much as I can throughout their entire athletic career, although short-lived. But, look, there's a real need for proper lighted fields in Summit. In the fall, when we're running out of light, it's very difficult for these players to safely compete and practice and participate and be part of a team. I played in the NFL for 13 years, sports have been a big part of my life. My father played in the league for 12 years, and I think it's paramount that these kids have the proper experience. Not to mention, a lot of these moms and dads are trying to unplug from work to get home in time for their slotted practice, whether it be baseball, lacrosse, soccer, football, et cetera, et cetera. That's tough at home to do that. Professionally, these parents are trying to grow their careers. So to be able to unplug from New York at 2:30 to get home multiple times a week just so you can fit in a certain time where you have sunlight is borderline impractical and tough. So, you know, safety, the safety reasons alone, look, I understand the sentiment for those who live around Tatlock, but this is very needed for these kids, and I would hate for any dad that comes into this town, or mom, to not have the opportunity to coach their kids because they're, we just don't have the space, the field space and the proper lighting, and it's a safety issue in my opinion. So, appreciate it and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
How you doing? Hal Dillon, 269 Ashland Avenue, Ashland Road, Rutherford. Thank you for having us tonight and listening to all these comments. I'm here to strongly urge the council to maintain the budget line item for installing the lights at Tatlock. I am currently the president of the Summit Lacrosse Club. I am intimately, on a daily basis, aware of the challenges of finding field space. We've got 700 boys and girls in the lacrosse program, and we've been growing year over year. I spend a lot of time with my compatriots and the other youth leagues, soccer in the spring specifically, but, you know, soccer, baseball, field hockey, we've got football in the spring now. And we spend an exorbitant amount of time really playing Tetris with the few fields that we have. We are massively constrained. In the meeting we had this year, you know, we, there were some sports we decided we couldn't do, and these were activities, you know, around some of the flag football programs, especially on the girl's side, that are now playing in other towns. We've got a new field hockey program that's just getting off the ground, and being able to get some spring reps is important, and they don't have enough time. So I'm here representing the lacrosse club, but I'm advocating for all of the youth in We spent time, and when I say every day, I mean every day navigating this challenge, and it's not sustainable. We do a great job, it's by a handful of people across all these leagues, but it's getting tougher and tougher and tougher. The other thing that I'd like, I'd really like to point out, we've got strong rec sports in Summit. We live in a world of pay-to-play, where there's club sports everywhere right now. They're incredibly expensive, and we offer amazing programs for the youth of Summit. All of the clubs that I just talked about, plus the ones in the fall that I didn't discuss, we offer youth sports that are economically affordable for the children in Summit. We hand out an enormous number of scholarships that most people are probably not aware of. But if we don't exist and we can't continue to grow and offer these services, it's, the kids are going to suffer. And trust me when I say that. I empathize with the challenges, thank you. My thesis actually is, we have to schedule everything back to back to back to back. If we had a little more air with, that the lights would give us at night, I think traffic and parking would actually get better because we could get a little bit of air in between all of those practicing games. So, listen, I've got three seconds. I think the lights are incredibly important, so I urge you to please keep those in the budget, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
John Flack, 15 Carleyan Court. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, appreciate your time tonight. I know it's a late night. I'm here to speak to you about the Tatlock Field Lights. I've been a resident for 16 years, I've got three children, a daughter in eighth grade, freshman son, and a senior son. I've coached every sport in town, soccer, football, flag football, basketball, and baseball. So I know the full picture from all the sports. The people of Summit voted for you. Sometimes, as a public servant, you need to make difficult decisions. This decision is not a hard one. The light, do you know how many children are in youth sports in Summit? Does anybody on council know how many children are in youth sports? Do you want, anybody want to guess?
All of them.
Yeah. 3,200 in youth sports, 3,200 children. That's not, that's not including, that's just the outdoor sports, okay? That's not including the high school athletes. You have approximately 1,000 kids in soccer, boys and girls. You have 700, you heard from Hal, you heard 700 boys and girls in lacrosse. You have 400 in football, boys and girls, because we now have a flag football program that requires more time. You have a growing field hockey program for girls. 30 girls three years ago, 50 girls two years ago, 80 girls this past year. That program continues to grow. 3,200 kids we're talking about in this community. When you add in the high school kids, you're looking at close to 3,800. But that includes band, because the band needs to use the field as well, not just athletes, but extracurriculars as well need to use that field. Where am I? I have a lot of chicken scratch here, sorry. So how can you disregard or vote against something that will benefit close to 4,000 children in our community? I don't even understand how we're having a discussion about this, this is a no-brainer. You need to put the greater good of the community above the minority. Not to mention, there's two safety issues regarding this issue. The first one, as you've heard, our young athletes are having practices in very dangerous locations. I heard Ms. Hamlet talk about kids falling in holes walking to school, Ms. Calmenson talking about sidewalks, kids getting to school, Mr., I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce today, Giacobi, mentioned about risk management and people hosting things in town, and we need insurance. Kids are practicing in parking lots. I've seen kids, I've coached, I shouldn't say this, but I've coached kids, not pointing fingers, at Franklin School in the parking lot. We've had practices at Wilson School in the parking lot. There's a small area at Memorial Field by the batting cages, up again where the houses are, there's like a little triangle area with like a two-foot cliff. You see kids practicing in these locations. I dare you to go walk in that area without spraining an ankle. It's not safe. We don't have enough, what? No way.
Great.
Yep. Okay.
If you have written comments, you can leave them with the clerk. Man, that was fast. Other comments from the public?
I did, she can't read them, so I'll carry them out.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, thank you.
PJ Angler, 16 High Street. I'm also formerly from 258 Woodland Ave, so very close to the Tatlock area. So I'm very familiar with some of the concerns and the traffic patterns and issues that they encounter, and I assure anyone that, you know, thinks otherwise, we do take that into consideration, it's not something we haven't thought about and don't consider. It's something that we think council has actually done a pretty good job of addressing through the various studies that they've done, the Tatlock Commission, Tatlock Neighborhood Commission that they've started last council meeting, which I believe is meeting this Friday. I know there's issues that we have to resolve, but some of the concerns I think were resolved primarily around the traffic issues. And some of the descriptions you hear are from only a handful of events that can actually draw this size of a crowd. The majority of what this field space is needed for is for practice. Yes, there'll be some games for youth, but the events that would draw this major traffic that everyone's concerned about is minimal. You're talking a few, you know, a few events a year. The majority of time is going to be spent on practice. Anyone that's coached or been involved in youth sports knows, you know, from an average week for any one of these sports, it's, the ratio of practice to games is usually like two or three to one. So just think about that math. At the high school level, it's even probably a more extreme ratio. So the amount of games where there's going to be out-of-town traffic that's drawn in is very minimal. With regards to some of the comments about the commitment of our signatories, I mean, I think the total number and the duration it took to get it shows that we're committed. I mean, over 2,000 signatures in basically just two weeks shows that there's a huge commitment and a huge push for this in this town. It's important to us, this is not a self-interest project, it's something that we truly believe It's something that we truly believe is important for this town, because we all believe that sports and, and all youth activities are the cornerstone of, of Summit. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to speak? Going once? Going twice? All right, we're going to close public comment section of our meeting. Thank you all for, for waiting and speaking. We're now on to our council comments and new business section. Anyone from council have anything they'd like to talk about?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to speak.
You may speak, Councilman Boyer.
I'll wait a second.
Yeah, wait a second till everyone.
I think this said April 1st.
All right, Councilman Boyer, why don't you take us out?
Thank you once again, Council President. Around March 10th, there was a Facebook post about an incident that occurred on Navy Playground, where there were two individuals who were intoxicated. And the Facebook post had mentioned that one of the individuals had grabbed a child. I had spoke to the person who posted this and got a little more information. It wasn't that person's child. The way it played out was this child had saw this person allegedly grab another child and told the mom. And the mom had spoke to the nanny, who didn't want to report it to the police, because she was fearful that she would lose her job. So the police, when they responded, they weren't aware that this individual had did any of that. But they did handle the situation appropriately with the intoxicated individual. That same day, I was driving back, I took the day off that same day, driving back from the mountain snowboard, and my daughter had called me. And middle school left out early, they had a half a day, and she said, Dad, I was uptown at Lululemon with a bunch of, my girlfriends, and, my daughter's 11, by the way. And she said there was a panhandler out there asking for a dollar, we refused, and he brandished a knife. And she said that they had ran. So upon hearing this, when I got home, me, my wife, my daughter, we immediately went to the police station. Actually, the first call I made was to the new chief, Chief Peters, and he said, Councilman Boyer, go to the police station and report it. So that's what I did. So we all went down there, and my daughter gave a, a very great statement. She's definitely a detective's child. Time, date, area, everything, who she was with, names of all individuals surrounding her. The only thing she didn't do was tell the police officers where the cameras were. But needless to say, that was a busy day for the police. A day or two later, the police arrested this individual. He is known to the town. And I'd like to say that our system, not our police, but our system, has failed us. Our system is failing us. They're failing to keep repeat offenders incarcerated, imprisoned. So let me tell you something about this individual, and you can find us via Google search. April 19th, 2023, this guy was arrested for disorderly conduct. He was processed and released. October 10th, 2023, he was arrested for burglary and theft, transported to Union County, processed, released. December 25th, 2023, he was arrested for simple assault, processed and released. October 12th, 2024, he was arrested on an outstanding warrant, processed, transported, and released. Needless to say, this week, he was finally arrested, and it took a first-degree attempted robbery for him not to be released after all of these charges. Our system is failing us. It's not our police officers, it's our system. There was once a time where I lived in a community, and it reminds me of being down south, we had this phrase called "your mama, my mama," right? So your kid was also my kid, and I still feel the same way. Because I want to tell a community what, what we should do. We need to reclaim that spirit. We have to report these crimes every single time that we see them. Urinating in public, drinking in public, drug use, inappropriate behavior, whatever it is, report it. Our police officers can handle it. They did 50,000 calls last year, maybe even more, I may be downgrading that, but they can handle it. We have to get these people off the street. You know, there are some passionate folks in this town. We rally for Ukraine, we rally for Palestine, for Israel, for social justice, you know, eradicate Elon Musk, Bordeaux. But where's the outcry for our safety? Regardless of whether you're Democrat, Republican, liberal, whatever it is, where's the outcry? Why are we not rallying in the middle of Springfield Avenue, telling our governor, our legislators, that we had enough? That this catch-and-release nonsense has to end? Does it take one of our children? Being assaulted, having someone pull a knife on him? Is it going to end when it's your child or mine? You know, I thought today, I said, why, you know, it's amazing that it actually happened to a current councilman, right? Like, I mean, God is like, you know, saying, hey, wake up, you know, you need to tell the people about this. Like, here's the cause. Well, this is the cause. If we can mobilize for international and national incidents, we can't all mobilize here in Summit? We can't rally here? Can't we all unite, whether we're Republican, Democrat, or whatever, around the safety of our homes and the safety of our children? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Other comments? Councilman Smallwood.
I don't know why I'm doing this to myself, it's always following Jamel. But I actually thought of a few things, either with Councilman Boyer's comments. You know, when you're an elected official, you're, you're required to, to make decisions for the community. And sometimes they're easy, sometimes they're difficult. Sometimes they're beneficial, sometimes they're not, to some people. But the mayor and I, and Director Schreger, met with a resident earlier today. And they have drainage issues. And their backyard is starting, every time it rains, starting to fill up. And then we have a resident here who's been coming and complaining to the city since 2011 about losing portions of her, of her yard, and nothing's, and it's 2025. I understand as municipal elected officials, we sometimes are limited to what we can do. But this has been going on since 2011. We can't keep blaming Union County. You know, it's Union County, it's, you know, Union County. Because she's lost half of her yard. I would really hate to see in 12, 13 years from now, the resident that we met with today come to a council meeting and express the exact same thing. We, we have to figure out a way and stop blaming Union County that, oh, it's part of Union County, it's Salt Brook, it's part of the state, or it's, we have to, we have to come up with a solution. And this is one of the hard things that we have to do, and work with the right people to fix half of her yard and to prevent another resident from losing half of her yard. I, I, it's, it's unbelievable to me that this has been going on for you since 2011, and, and nothing has been done. You know, I, again, our, our time is here limited, but whatever we can do as a governing body, we need to put full support behind it right away. And stop pushing the buck down the road and, you know, blaming other people. The squeaky wheel gets oiled, right? And unfortunately for you, you've been, you've been oiling, or you've been, is it squeaking? You've been squeaking since 2011, right? And it's, you know, it hasn't been oiled yet. And I'm sorry for that. So I, I think, I would like to challenge the rest of our time here to help get this fixed as soon as possible. Contact the people that can really make it happen, because the next storm that comes through, you know, it, it could be the garage that's in the back of her house, or back of her yard. And then what's going to happen is, half of her garage, or the entire part of her garage, is going to be in Salt Brook. And then it just makes, it exacerbates the problem. Is that what it's going to take to actually get Union County to do something? I mean, I don't understand, and I, again, I'm, I'm not a politician, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand all the laws of why we can't actually help our residents. To me, it's, it's common sense. And I, I hope that, you know, I, I would love to work, I know, Delia, you've been working on this for a long time, and Councilman Boyer. But, I, I mean, I would love to be able to help in any way I possibly can, contact whoever I can to get it moving, and so that she's not here next year saying the exact same thing, I just lost my garage.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Very quickly, I just want to say, the wheels are moving. I just didn't want to use oil, but the, the wheels are moving, and our city solicitor will, will look at what we have, and then we'll put it forward. It's been in our committee, I mean, we are getting it out of our committee, just out of our committee almost, and so we are there. I think we have all the pieces together, we know what we, we need to do, short and long-term solutions. So, yeah, I, I think, Councilman Smallwood, I think we're, we're there.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
A couple of comments. So on the, on the Salt Brook, I'm pleased to mention that we'll be meeting with the, with Commissioner Mirabella, Congressman Kane, his team, as well as Amy, Amy Wagner from the county this week. I couldn't be more pleased with the partnership from Union County, and I believe Rick Mateus will be there as well, the county engineer. So we've made true progress. We are literally knocking on every door. Even spoke with Congressman Kane's office about it today again. And our conversations today are just, how do we get prepared for the meeting? Because it's a really complex issue, right? The Salt Brook starts all the way up at Memorial Field, and I've spent time in those residents' homes, where the Salt Brook is overflowing in that area. So it's a really complex problem, so in fairness to other councils, it's a bear. But as, as the woman set up here tonight, we should be putting, placing this as, as one of the top priorities, as, as a council, because this is truly why you're an elected official. And it's really complex. We've spoken to lobbyists, we've spoken to DEP. I think we're finally kind of getting there. But I'm really excited that Union County is, is meeting with us on the ground this week. It took a lot of attention, we had helicopters, we had. And sometimes that's what you have to do. And, and Mr. Giacobi, what I will say is, I challenge you with all of these issues, all of these residents who are coming to us with problems. You look at the drainage at the Dell, you look at the Salt Brook. A lot of times, the staff's scared to handle all this stuff, because we've got, we've gone back and forth with the lawyers about drainage and stuff. We have to get away from, from being afraid, and I'm not saying this is, this is something that you do, but we have to function and allow, allow ourselves to advocate for the residents. If they have a drainage problem, and it's been going on for years, let's just huddle up and try to fix it. There are instances, I'm sure, where there are lawsuits and we can't, but we have to, we are here for these residents and, and to fix these problems. And, and I encourage you in law and labor, Bob, to, to really take some of these issues and, and understand if there aren't legal challenges, then let's, let's get it done, right? Tired of talking about it, too much to do. So that, that's this week. So we'll report back next week. On the, the school board estimate, we've had some really productive meetings. I had a meeting today with Scott Huff and two members, I'm on the school board estimate along with Councilman Smallwood and the mayor, so we can't, we have to avoid a quorum. So I had a meeting today with Assistant Business Administrator Kathy Sarno, Superintendent Scott Huff, as well as two members from the school board, which is great. It's supposed to be a collaborative effort. The Board of School estimate is there to not only, you know, represent or help the school board, but it's a collaborative effort, so we can represent the taxpayers. Because they're requesting one of the largest tax increases in, in history. And if you look back, there's only been two times, I believe, in the last 10 years where we've exceeded that 2% cap. And we're about to do it real quick. So we're looking under the hood aggressively in every operation, every department. We've told them to go back to the drawing board, because without, without looking at cutting teachers or books, because that's not what we want to do, our goal is to keep every professional that we can, but we're going to challenge them on operational costs, on shared services. It's not a fun process, but if you would have seen the tax increase that you were about to get, you would have been lined up that, at that door during budget season. So these are some really important conversations. The school board meeting is this Thursday, and the school board estimate meeting is on March 27th. So we're looking at all sorts of things, even, even past audits and projected forecasts for electricity. We're having some, some really good conversations, and I think today's meeting was, was really productive, and we came away really excited. Sort of came in the beginning, we were kind of butting heads, but I think it's actually proved to be a fun process, and we're all learning a lot, and I think it's going to be a good product. I think we're actually going to come up with some good ideas to save the taxpayer money. So, and I thank all of you for being here. I know this is a long meeting, and I'm just tired of talking, so thank you for your engagement and your participation.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
This is like the best council comment period I've ever seen. You guys are awesome tonight. I'm proud to sit up here with you. So a few things. I'm crying out for public safety. Here's my outcry. More police, more foot patrols, enforcement, creative ordinances like the resident protection ordinance. Let's go. I mean, you know, we got to do everything that we can, especially when, you know, at the state level, I think things are maybe getting a little bit better, but they're not helping us. So we have to help ourselves. There was a, a, a former councilperson who, who once commented his great respect for the slow and deliberate pace of municipal government. I cannot abide that. I mean, you know, maybe, maybe there's little we can do about the pace, but we, we don't have to accept it, let alone celebrate it. We got to keep moving with everything. You let me know when you hit a legal roadblock, and we at Law &amp; Labor will work to clear the path, if it's at all possible. And if it's not, then we'll have to just find another route. Who saw Grease this week, last week? Awesome. Support the arts, everybody. And I want to thank Hal Dillon, who I know encouraged a lot of the players from the lacrosse club to go out and support their, their classmates and, and help them get a full house. I'm planning, this will be next year, I guess, because pretty much everything's done, to work with all of the, there, there's some overlap between youth sports and the arts, but not enough, and I think... And I think that a lot of the, a lot of the athletes that don't participate in it don't also go to see it and support it. And so I'm, I'm planning to reach out to the presidents of the various youth clubs to encourage their players to go do it, because, you know, the, those budding thespians and musicians and dancers, they deserve it. They work as hard as anybody else, and it's a lot of fun. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Just real quick, Council President.
Please, Councilman Boyer.
So I just want to make.
Is this the threes, the charm? Are we good with that, right?
And this is, this is the last one, because I just want to make sure that Adriana knows this. Delia, Councilwoman Hamlet and I make a great team, because on this, on the Salt Brook issue, and this is like the first time I'm not at a twenty-thousand-foot level, and Councilwoman Hamlet is at a twenty-foot-thousand level, and, and she's like, we gotta, we gotta jump on this whole thing. And I appreciate that. And she's been working hard to get all of, you know, the state, the federal and the county involved. But what is in our committee right now is fixing that property so that the county can come in and fix the drain. Like, short-term, I'm only here for another year-type goal, right? And I want to see it happen. So I just want to let you know that this is not, I don't mean to say that, but this is not like a bureaucracy thing, like, oh, we're going to have all these people come or whatever. In our committee right now is like, we need to do this before the House falls in the Salt Brook, right? So I just want to let you know that that is in the committee. And, and Bob and our city solicitor, that is the legal thing that we want you to look at, so that we can get it out of our committee and get it here to vote on it, because the money's already on the budget and everything is already, we just need to make sure the legal stuff is just pushing through.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to wrap it up just real quick. So just a comment on safety. I'm, you know, we started the, the meeting focused on a new police chief, and as I mentioned, I'm excited. Chief Peters is going to, he has amazing ideas around how to engage, engage the community and keep, and keep our community safe. We are a safe community. The police do an amazing job. However, there is also occasional crime in our community, and we have to take it very, very seriously. One home burglary is one too many. One citizen feeling threatened is one too many. And I think what sets this council apart is not to say, wow, there's, it's New Jersey, it's the state, there, ugh, there's nothing we can do about it. That, I completely categorically reject that, that viewpoint. There is things we can do. And I applaud this council for always looking to add boots on the ground, to look at legal remedies in order to strengthen our ordinances, to, you know, go after people who do bad things in our town. We've invested in technology that leverage the fine people in the Summit Police Department to do a, a better job. There is no silver bullet. We, sadly, human nature is, we're not angels. However, I, you will continue to see this council stay laser-focused on making people safe. It's the number-one thing that government should do for its people. And we're not going to rest until, you know, people feel safer. And like I said, there is no silver bullet for this, but we're not going to just throw up our hands and say there's nothing we can do. So I, I really appreciate the attitude that my fellow council people have, and I respect our professionals who are out there every day doing this, and we're going to keep doing it. So, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you, people.